Jim, I think you're there or here. Is your name there? Oh, you changed it, okay.
I didn't change it.
Okay, I think we are ready to start the meeting. Please take your seats and we'll start. First, I think we have the pool room. We have United, TERT, and GRF available. That's great. This is the special open meeting of the Golden Rain Foundation Maintenance and Construction Committee, Monday, December 12 at 1:00 p.m., and it's going to be live on TV and virtual with Zoom. We have problem with Zoom. They can see us, they can hear us, but they cannot make a comment on the Zoom, but they can put it in the chat box. And then when we come to the question-answer, we can read it out of the chat box and answer the question the best we can. I'm calling the meeting in order. I ask for the approval of agenda. Has there any change in the agenda or any comments or concern? If not, the agenda is approved. I have a chair remarks. I have just only a couple of items that I want to start with. There have been question that I want to put in bed right at the beginning. That one question was how many EV car we have in the community? This is what I got from the VMS. The fuel type vehicle with unleaded gas, 16,773. These are registered car. Plug-in, 1,582. Hybrid, 749. Plug-in hybrid, 104. Diesel, 14. Hydrogen, 12. Grand total of 19,234. Out of the plug-in, which is 1,582, this is the interesting part. Only 90 of them are registered and pay fees, which is baffling. Either most of these car are in the garage that they don't need to pay anything because in the garage they use their own electricity, or somehow they charging the vehicle either in the carport or outside. And we don't have that number, we don't have that data, we don't know what it is. But those are the information that I have available for you to know what's going on on that side. There was another question about the EV charging station behind the admin building. We have five station back there, Level 1 and 2 charging. Those station was built with the grant. Majority, about 80% of the cost was grant from the government. We only pay like 20% of the cost of putting those station back there. The caveat was those station must be open to public, and that's why they are behind admin. The question was what is it, you know, usage? We have no clue if has been used by members or by anybody else outside the community because it's open. The other question was how much we made out of those? This is number I have. Since 2019 till today, our net income out of those five station by 5,500. That means 1,100 a year. The cost of putting those with those kind of income takes probably about 15, 20 years to recoup the cost. But that's beside the point. Those station are open to public, anybody can use it, and the data doesn't really help justification for having charging station inside the community which is not open to public. For that reason, there is not, you know, a grant that we can use to put the station inside. So it has to be our cost. And that's the purpose of this meeting. We have only one item agenda to discuss the SCE proposal of Southern California Electric about putting charging station within the community and the cost of that which comes out of our pocket. Those are my initial remark. There are other question. I'm pretty sure there's going to be a lot of question, and we happy to answer it the best we can. The next item that I have is member comment. The member comments should be on the items that is not on the agenda because the comments after the presentation, we have comment directly related to the agenda. So I will ask at this time if there are any member comments that is not on the agenda.
Is your copy of the agenda?
Yes, outside. Right at the front door. Okay, if there you have, there is a question, please come to the... We have microphone, so everyone can hear what your concern is. But this should be item not on the agenda.
I have a question about who's maintaining what we have and what we're looking at, the maintenance part. Who maintains these?
Maintain what?
The charging stations.
The one that we have?
Or the ones that you're looking at. Who's going to maintain this? What entity will maintain this?
They maintain it, the maintenance is with SCE, the cost is us.
So ChargePoint or the people that you use to build them are not going to be in the equation at all?
Is that microphone on?
That's what's confusing.
What is the confusion?
Right now, you have ChargePoint out there.
Correct.
They are the ones that are maintaining them also, only they're not. That's my issue. Who's going to maintain all of this? So is that, they're not going to be involved anymore?
Okay, go ahead.
I can answer that. So you are correct. ChargePoint is in charge of the maintenance of the existing charging stations, and they are responsible for its repair and maintenance. Just recently, less than a week ago, they change a power module for one of the fast chargers. So they are actively maintaining that. They have a hotline number that you can call, and they create service tickets. So they remain operational.
I'm sorry, that's not happening. I'm up there every day. The far fast charger on the right has been down for three weeks. I called them, they returned, they hung up on me, then I went to see your people, that's why I'm here. So they're not maintaining, that's all I know.
Thank you.
No, that's comments about the agenda, this are the agenda. These are comments out of the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Alfred Meisner, 30, 71, Beazin, Boy. First of all, I just wanted to make a comment that it's nice to see someone putting appropriate information in the community paper rather than information that is biased or misinformation. And whoever that is, I just want to compliment that, great job there. The other thing I wanted to mention is I've had a plug-in vehicle Honda Clarity for five years now, working with my neighbor, taking turns unplugging her car, plugging in my car, the carport. There's, I apologize, I hadn't seen any other information other than this meeting, but I did catch this new program. And I'll give you this comment. Two men can come in and install a unit like this in a day. So a lot of less cost, a lot of less electricity. So all I'm saying is, I'm a younger person that moved here when I was 59, but one thing that's crucial is if we're going to be a main 55 and older community in the future, we have to stay with the future and move forward with some of these newer technical advances that we will all see. Because I'm sure we can talk to some people in their 90s that, you know, they had debates about gas stations back then. So first of all, I'd like to applaud you all for tackling this difficult decision. We have a lot of issues in the village, and I just think it's something that works for the people that have it and the futuristic people that are thinking about buying a place in the village when that is part of the story. But the other information I wanted to say is there's a lot of new opportunities, and I'm here to hear what the program is, but I think it's not just only one program, but hopefully many programs that could possibly fill the gaps without putting an undue burden on the community, and I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Good morning. My name is Sidigay Nasery. Ever since I moved here, I have electric car. I have been sharing with my other neighbor the plug that we use, the outlet, and he has to work, I have to work. So it's, most of the time, we both have to charge the same time, and it, you know, blows out the outlet, so we both cannot charge the car, and that affects my work. I have to call them, say running late. So it's very, very inconvenient. You were mentioning about the cost is with you and the program is with Edison or SCE. When do you think you can actually implement this decision? The sooner the better. If there's a charge, of course there's a charge, but when, by when this is going to take place?
Well, this is about the SCE proposal to put charging station in three different location at the clubhouse. This got nothing to do with the carports. People that have garages, their garages have 220 in there, and they charge their electric vehicle, no problem. People that have carport, they cannot charge their vehicle fully charged. They can use eight hours and about 20 or 30% charge they can do. And three of those carports are together, if all three of them charge, the fuse, you know, jumps and, you know, you have to go back and flip it again. That's the problem. The people that buy EV cars, they want the convenient too. They won't be able to charge it in their carports. Other than that, there are charging stations around community, which one of the things that I'm asking VMS to do research on all the charging station around the community and behind the clubhouse and then Iris Hotel, beyond the community center and Iris Hotel available for fast chargers. The question you're asking about carports is not GRF issue. GRF only manages the amenities and the public areas, not the carports. The carports is with the mutuals. United, if you live in United, or if you live in TERT, you need to talk to them about that issue. So GRF, we got nothing to do with the providing services in the carport, so.
I'm not talking about carport, I'm talking about charging the, charging the electric cars problem.
Yeah. Charging electric car, we have five station behind the community center right now.
That, as the other lady was saying, it doesn't always work. And when you don't have a charge, you can even go one mile further. So it's, it's very inconvenient, it's a problem.
Yeah, we'll look into that, and you know, I think Bart said he's going to look into that, see why is not being maintained by the owner. Because we don't own, and we build it, we build it with the grant, and it's open to public, and they maintain it. So we have to, we have to see why, what's going on, that they are not maintaining their systems.
So the SCE program or suggestion or proposal is to build a few stations inside the village?
Well, that's why we're going to, when we go to that presentation, you will see, those are for inside the community, at the clubhouse, as it should, will not be public, it's only for the members.
I understand. So my question is, by when do you think this is going to happen?
First, we have to decide if we want to proceed with it or not. This is, that's this meeting, we will decide to recommend. This committee will get all the information today and make a motion either to accept or reject, depends over the, you know, which way goes, and that result will go to GRF board. GRF board has the last word on that. They're going to say, they're going to go for it or not. That's the GRF board decision. And I don't know that till, you know, we don't know that till the GRF board meet after a recommendation is sent to them. So the next GRF board meeting, hopefully this issue will be discussed for the final decision on go or no go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm new to the community, my name is Pat Mycone. I have a question. I was talking with a friend about the pragmatism of having these charging stations at the clubhouse. First of all, the car won't go unless it's charged, but it takes a while to charge it. So if I'm, you know, two miles away and I drive up to the clubhouse, what do I do then? Do I wait around for eight hours? Do I get a ride back? Do I put a bicycle in my car and ride a bike back? I mean, has this been discussed, the whole feasibility and pragmatic, pragmatism of it?
Thank you. That's a great question. If I were you, it's probably best for me to go to Wholefoot, charge it there while I'm doing shopping rather than sitting in front of the, on the curb in front of the clubhouse. But that's, that's what all of these decision need to be made based on that. Yes, sir.
Hi, Joe Silva, 30, 39, in. I'm wondering about the cost of the electricity, the ongoing cost? How is that going to be handled?
Cost of electricity for...
Right, people are going to come up, charge their cars?
They use the credit card, it has to be a credit card reader, that's why you pay for the electricity with the charging stations.
Okay, because I was reading in the agenda, and it said 150,000 per station. We're considering three stations, plus the cost of electricity. So that's for the individual?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so it's not a community cost?
No. That's, that's the crux of it. No, you are not going to pay for somebody else to charge their car.
Okay, because I think we're doing that now, because as, as you said, there's 1,592 electric vehicles?
Yes.
And only 90 of them are registered and paying for electricity?
But they might be in the garages. Garages, they pay for their own electricity.
Some of them would be, some of them...
I don't have that number.
Right. And I know people with electric cars, and I know that people use the 110 voltage that's available. And I also know that sometimes friends come in because there's no control on who can use that particular spot if a person has the permission of the owner. So friends can come in and charge at our expense.
I understand, and that's with the mutuals, that's not GRF.
Right, right. I'm just pointing out what does happen.
Yeah, you need to bring that up with the mutuals so they cover their cost.
Right.
We don't have any jurisdiction over those areas.
But this will be strictly credit card and not subsidized at all?
No, not subsidized, no way.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, these are, these are unrelated to the SCE proposal. Well, let me, okay.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mike Rau, 2334D. I've just been, maybe you'll bring enlightenment today. I've been reading on the internet that the suppliers of these charging stations are notoriously irresponsible in maintaining them and keeping them operational. So we're talking about investment of a fair amount of money to some provider and maybe don't have sufficient guarantees that they will maintain those things. So I would like to hear some comments about reliability, responsibility, and who you go to when they fail to keep up their end of the bargain.
Sure, thank you. I think after we make the presentation, we can discuss some of those issue. That's related to the presentation itself. Any other questions? Let's go to the presentation. It's going to take some times to go through the presentation. The number five is department head, but I think that goes right into the presentation or we have other issues?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you for that. There's no update at this time. That will be presented at the regularly scheduled M&amp;C meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, then let's go ahead and start the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, committee members, members of the audience. First, I have to apologize as you have to turn to see the presentation, but the public is able to see that in full. We're going to get started now. So first, what is Charge Ready 2 program? This is the program under which GRF apply for, and it is designed to assist businesses and property owners with deploying EV charging stations at multifamily buildings and other businesses. The program under which we apply for is the charging infrastructure rebate, and it has two options. The option that we selected is the one where SCE builds the entire infrastructure up to the charging station, that is at zero expense to GRF. The mutual is responsible though for the purchase of the charging equipment, its installation, its maintenance and operation, and there's a minimum commitment of 10 years where they have to remain fully functional during that period of time. There is, there are associated fees for this program for Edison to administer that is separate from any other fees that we pay as SCE users, and that fee amounts to about $20,000 over the 10-year period. So the locations that qualify under this program are multifamily, public sector, workplace, place of business, and commercial properties. We fall under the multifamily type of business to be considered under this program. The minimum number of ports that SCE will consider for these facilities is 10 ports. I'd like to clarify that that applies to the facilities that we apply for, that is not the minimum requirements per the program. And the reason for that is they had reviewed this initially from a desk review, and they figure that the minimum number of four was not going to be sufficient to qualify under the program. So we presented, they suggested that a minimum of 10 ports will be required. GRF considered this option, and they recommended that we do not exceed 10 ports per facility for consideration. These, these 10 ports occupy physically 10 parking spaces, but because we have existing parking facilities, a minimum of two per site will need to be handicap compliant parking spaces. And that means that as a minimum to provide the buffer zone, you will lose one additional parking space, so a minimum of 11 spaces will be lost under this program. So SCE and their consultants went to each one of the seven clubhouses that they were considering. We were fortunate to have advisors and some board members attend some of those so they could see what they look at, what are some of the challenges that they perceive, measure distances from existing transformers, and come up with location. So after that study was done, they consider all factors, and they recommended that, SCE has recommended that clubhouse is 1, 2, 6... SCE has recommended that Clubhouses 1, 2, 6, and 7 were, are not feasible under this program. However, Clubhouses 3, 4, and 5 are still considered to be in the running, they're still considered to meet the minimum requirements to qualify under this program. This is one of the clubhouses that was selected. It has plenty of parking. And we're gonna see some pictures or aerials of the locations as to where they propose to provide these charging stations. Like at Clubhouse 3, you see the area that it's circled in red. That's where the proposed charging spaces would be. The transformer, Edison's transformer, is to the right of that red circle area is the minimum distance. They have to cross the parking lot, they have to provide the handicap parking spaces, and they have to delineate a path of travel from those parking spaces to the main entrance to Clubhouse 3. So, that's the first location. Clubhouse 4, we had originally requested that they be installed. If you look at the bottom of the screen, you see where the cul-de-sac is. That was the original location that we applied for. After looking at the location of the transformer and what they will have to do, that location became unfeasible due to the distance. The transformer is close to where that red rectangular area is, which is where Edison proposes to provide the charging stations. That too will occupy all of those parking spaces closest to the clubhouse along the north side of the, of Clubhouse 4. And last is Clubhouse 5, where we are here today. They looked at a number of locations. The bottom left-hand corner of the parking area, they looked at all the way over to the right, but that one had the right topography and is not too far from the transformer, which is, if we're looking outside of this building, it will be to the right. So, that distance was not, was not too much, and they said that that will be the ideal location for that. That would require modifications to the existing planter median, and also delineation of path of travel to the building. So, now let's look at some numbers. What we did is, we requested preliminary estimates from vendors to give us an idea how much it will be to purchase the equipment, to install it, and to maintain it for the 10-year period. And we added the 19,800 dollars, or close to $20,000 in SCE management fee that they're gonna charge. And it, it rounds up to approximately $150,000 per site. So, that will be the out-of-pocket expense from the mutual for each one of those facilities. If it is recommended to move forward with all three of them, it will be $450,000, that will be our share of the cost to do that. Edison's portion of the work, which is the infrastructure, it will be covered by Edison. Only the $20,000 is over 10 years. I'm sorry, I'd like to answer that question, and I'd like to clarify that except for the $60,000 in Edison fees, $390,000 need to be paid now with the installation of the equipment. That is an expense that if we move forward with this project, you need to pay now. The $20,000 per site, that one is on an annual basis.
I appreciate that, if you wait a little bit, thank you.
Thank you. So, I've shown this before. This is the, the diagram that Edison put together to assist anyone applying for this grant to follow along. And we have completed steps 1, 2, 3. Step number 4, we're about halfway through, this is where we are today. Once we complete step number 4, if the recommendation and the decision is to move forward with the project, after we sign agreements, then there will be expenses that GRF will incur if we decide to cancel the program after that. For example, if it gets to the development preliminary site design, which is 7A, or it gets to the grant easement or to secure permits, those expenses that SCE and their consultants and/or contractors incur may be chargeable to us if we move forward. Up to, up to now, they have, we have not incurred any expenses. But until now, we can make any decision. It will not, if the decision is to cancel all applications, we will not incur any expenses. Notice that I crossed out the customer-built option. Those were, those were the two options that were available to us when we applied under this program. We applied for the SCE-built option, and so it will be this, the A option, or 7A, 8A, and so on, up to 11A. And then, once it gets to step E, if we move forward, then that applies to any of those options. If you look at the very top, it gives you a rough idea of the timeline, and how, how tight it is going to get between steps B and C, where if, again, if the decision is to move forward under the program, we will have 45 days from the time that the agreements are signed to the time when we issue a purchase order for the purchase of the equipment. So, so with Oh, it's because I'm moving. It's a, it's a resilient, resilient flooring, and it moves, so it creates some vibration. I'll try not to move so much, I'll stop my dancing. So, in, in summary, and what you see as part of the staff report, it's staff recommendation to, at this time, for this program, to cancel all applications under the current Charge Ready 2 program, and to continue looking for other alternatives, other funding alternatives on how we can implement this, or scale back in such a way as, as this committee and the board directs to perhaps one that we utilize less parking spaces than we are currently proposing. With that, I'll turn it back over to the chair, and I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. As you heard, we haven't incurred any cost. So, going forward is all gonna be associated with the cost. Remember, the cost that we have to put in at the beginning to get these stations, we have to give up those parking spaces, we have to have a 10-years maintenance agreement, all of that is in that proposal. With that, I'm gonna open it up to the question.
Hi, my name is Carl Andazzo, most of you know me. I used to be on United Board, and I'm a, I'm an advisor on the GRF MNC Committee. Couple of things. One, we don't know whether that $150,000 comes from, and it would really have been nice for this particular committee to see where you came up with $150,000. A spreadsheet that specifically addresses that, because at this particular point in time, you've done everything in your power to put ice on this whole idea. Now, you know, at the end of the day, we're not gonna do this because there's not enough oomph in this particular village here to basically wanna do this, because they'd rather put money into golf courses than put it into EV charging. So, under that circumstances, so, $150,000, I don't believe that's the number. Okay. Secondly, when we discussed this in various committee meetings in the past, we said we wanted to locate these charging stations in strategic clubhouse locations. Now, they told us 7 and 2 and what have you are not good for them because it's gonna cost us a lot, cost them a lot of money to run infrastructure to those locations and to transformers. So, that's why they nixed those. But 3, 4, and 5, why would you have 4 and 5? 5 right now is surrounded by garages. Who's gonna use them? Okay? Let's talk about 3. 3 is really the best place to do it, okay? Because of the fact, United, nobody has a garage, and as a result of that, they're using carports. Each carport only has 20 amps. You draw 12 amps, and that means only one car can charge at a time. So, 3, 4, and 5? We wouldn't even wanna do 4 and 5, I don't think, if we even did this at all, because they're not strategic to what will be used. Okay? The other thing right now is the fact that when we discussed this with you, a number of us, advisors and others, we said, "Go to SCE and tell them, 'We're not doing 10, we'll do 5 per location.'" And they kept pushing back. We didn't push back enough, I don't think, because we don't need 10 locations. To give up 11 parking spots is ridiculous. We won't have that type of traffic for that particular use. So, under the circumstances, we should have pushed for 5 per location, not a 10. So, I mean, I'm a little disappointed that we really didn't do our homework enough to make, make this work. At this particular point in time, I see this committee going along with your recommendation and saying, "Nixed." Because $450,000 is a scary number, and you guys don't even tell us how that money came about. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jill Hekt, and I just moved here a year ago. Wanted to congratulate staff on the presentation. I was a little wary for who pays the upfront cost for design and infrastructure evaluation. You partnered with the utility, saving this community a lot of upfront costs. So, thank you for that, and thank you to the board for being in the room when their engineers were evaluating the different proposals. Anytime you dig in the ground, it gets very expensive. So, that was a good explanation of what locations rose to the top. But I would appreciate, for the follow-up information to the wider board, a breakdown of what is upfront and what is ongoing cost. It's not as clear in the staff report, and I think people would really appreciate that information. And as a relatively new member, I want, a resident, I wanted to say that, at the risk of quoting a good baseball movie, "If you build it, they will come." I have a feeling that the numbers that the chair was provided by staff for the number of plug-in vehicles will rise as more new members come in or more current residents adopt EV and purchase EV vehicles. There are incentives out there for anybody in California. There are also federal incentives. But yes, there are bugs in the program. We heard some about maintenance of the charging stations is not what it should be. We are a little ahead of the curve on that, but I think a lot of the people who are moving into the community now, they're accustomed to having this amenity where they're coming from. At their office building, at a shopping center, by Whole Foods, that kind of thing. And so, this is gonna rise to be an expectation, much like parks, sidewalks, swimming pools, as an amenity people will expect. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Almeisner, 3071B. I haven't followed up on all of the work that's gone on to get us to this point, but a couple of observations, just from my own use of five years using my Clarity Plug-in Hybrid. There's only been once where, out of novelty, I plugged it in at the administration building, just to see what that was about when I was over there at the gym. In five years, not once have I plugged it in in a charging station anywhere else other than my 120 volt. Takes 12 hours to charge it, and with the amount of driving that I do, 90% of the driving is done on battery. So, I think a lot of these issues are sort of overblown from people that don't have the experience or maybe the same experience that some people have in the village. Many people don't drive far, there's a lot of things close by that are easily accessed, so there's not huge needs. Maybe a top-off at some of these locations is maybe appropriate. And sometimes, when you're going to a play or an event at Clubhouse 3, I could see things like that. You're going to Clubhouse 4 to do work in the woodshop or in other buildings, go to the pool, you can charge up there. But I think that more information needs to be done to determine what the true needs are of the community. Because let's say you build it and they will come. If we're stuck for 10 years, why not do a survey of how many people in that area would use such a facility? And possibly go and do a test at one location first, based on that analysis of the response from the community. And therefore, you can sort of pre-test this concept as we go forward with maybe potential other ideas and other opportunities. I think that there's no rush, we've been a long time without it. Doesn't seem there's a big need. Everyone's looking towards the future of the needs. I think that there's a built-in possibility with newer technology to do something with solar panels on carports and have a joint unit. I provided one little piece, the guy does it in a day, two, two men. I'm just saying that there's no big rush to spend this money. But I can tell you that when you look at the monthly costs that we pay, those are all less costly per month than what you would pay on the outside. So, a lot of people are complaining about costs that are here, but I saved enough money to move here, retire, and live here. And I want the same benefits that people were given 50 years ago. If you don't have the money, or you overshot with your expectations of how long you're gonna live, you know, I know a lot of my friends have moved to Texas. It's cheaper there. California's an expensive place to live. I grew up all my life in Southern California. So, please do the right thing for the future of the community, and don't just pick spots based on what's gonna cost us the least amount of our funds. It has to be appropriate, because this is the problem that I see from board to board. People are so short-term, they're not looking long-term. And a new group comes in, and then the whole thing starts over again. And no one's even gone back and evaluated what was done before to see if it worked. So, better planning is gonna save us a lot of money and really meet our needs. So, if this needs more time, give it more time, but don't rush into anything based on assumptions. Do the work, do the research, and then make a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nancy Harris, 480C. I bought a plug-in hybrid six months ago out of a commitment. I didn't have to buy a new car, didn't have to buy anything. But it was time. The earth is burning, so I did. So, I bought a plug-in, knowing that I probably would have to stay home with an EV. So, I did buy a plug-in, and there is a huge learning curve for anybody. So, as you do these proposals, think about education. Think about open forums like this to explain these things to people, about how it happens, how you pay for it, what's going on. And I made a commitment not to plug-in, because we've got another car, we got a golf cart, you know, and we got a carport. So, I'm out here trying to plug-in, and it is defining my life at this point. The only plug-in, the only chargers that are working in this community are behind the admin building. There used to be one in Woods Canyon, the hike, you know, Woods Canyon. So, I go there a lot for hiking, and I talk to them, and they say, "No, we can't use them anymore." Okay? And there's some up on, and these are all charge points. And there's one, one up on Aliso Creek, too, up on the top of like where Glenwood is. Those are down. So, even if, as I'm going around trying to charge, I can't. They don't exist, and not just about this, but They don't exist, and not just about this, but in the whole area, not just Laguna Woods. The thing that we've got to remember is, 2035, no more internal combustion engines for the state of California. Now, that seems a while, a ways along, but that's a mandate from the state, and we have a mandate from the feds. So to not do something, to not at least start doing something, seems fairly ridiculous. We've had to do something. My question about what you're calling, like these 10 slots, are they going to be the old chargers that are now up there, those slow chargers? They're worthless. Nobody can use them, they're taking up space up there. If they're not fast chargers, forget it. It won't work for anybody. Two fast chargers get two cars out of there in an hour and 15 minutes. That's the turnover time.
Thank you.
My name is Ann Beltran. I'm at 8540. Thank you for holding this meeting and for all the work that's gone on about these EVs. My husband and I have been EV, EV owners for about a year and a half now. I have a question about the staff's report and their negative recommendation, which would involve canceling all applications. And my question is, why, why that's your recommendation? As I read your report, you provided a lot of information about cost and parking spaces, but what is the rationale of the administration in proactively suggesting that all the applications be withdrawn? That's certainly a big influencer in this community and in this discussion, and I just don't see where their opinions are really clearly stated. Another question I have is about the cost of maintaining each of these locations or from the installation onward. My understanding is that any amounts being spent on those installations, whether it's $150,000 for one location or $450,000 for three, that those amounts would be amortized over time into the rates that the customers pay. So as a resident, I would expect that when I go up to one of those chargers, I would be paying, number one, for the electricity coming through. It'd be a clear pass-through of the electricity cost. And secondly, that there would be some additional expense intended to amortize the $450,000 over an appropriate period of time. So that, as with many improvements in this village, there would be some upfront expense by GRF, but that over time, GRF would recoup its investment from the residents. So that these would become fully resident user, EV user, paid for. So that's my understanding of how this cost would go, and that it's really been unnecessarily alarming to people to suggest that it's going to impact non-users. The idea is that the people who are using it pay for it. And my last question is, if this is something that is, has reasons for, as Carl said, for not doing all three applications, why couldn't we do one? Why couldn't we do the $150,000 to do Clubhouse 3? Why does it, why is it an all-or-nothing deal at this point?
Thank you.
Joe Silva, 3039N. There's someone here from Edison?
No.
No, okay. Because I was just wondering how many other HOAs had purchased these kinds of stations, or if our boards had talked with other HOAs about their purchases and how those worked out. Has, has that been done, or?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, one thing I'm concerned about is the cost, and not for me, because I barely do any driving, one way or the other. I think a lot of us here are retired, and the issue of electric, gas, whatever, it's not much of an issue. But the issue of having to pay $450,000 right off the bat is an issue when you consider that seven, 50% of us are over the age of 75 years old. So that's a big burden on a lot of people who are probably retired and don't, frankly, don't do much driving at all. I'm not that old, and I'm retired, and I don't do that much driving. For me, it makes no sense to buy an electric car. You know, it's $50,000, $40,000, I don't do that.
We heard you. Thank you.
So, you know, it's an upfront burden on a huge portion of the population that will not be needing this. Another thing I've heard is that, you know, we're concerned about the environment. And of course, you know, I'm concerned about the environment. I live in it. I've got family who will live in it long after I'm gone. But, you know, the truth of the matter is, is that the planet is roughly four and a half billion years old. During that period, if we remember any of our education, we've had ice ages, we'd have periods where the globe was covered with jungles, dinosaurs.
Would you please wrap it up? Yeah, thank you.
Right. We are working our way out of the last ice age right now. The planet is warming up. That's part of the natural process of a planet. Another natural process that's going on is that the sun is getting hotter. And, you know, this is something we can all duck, duck, go, or Google.
Yeah.
The sun's getting hotter, so that's going to contribute to the planet getting warmer.
Thank you.
So, so there are a lot of things to consider. There's a lot of money to be made by pushing these kinds of programs, but in the final analysis, another interesting thing for people who like science, currently Neptune is experiencing.
I think you spend your three minutes, I appreciate that. Thank you for your comments.
Again, just think of what's going on in the universe.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
And that it's not all humans burning fossil fuels.
Yes.
One final thing.
Well, let's, we have a lot of people waiting. Would you please hold that for the later?
Very quickly, very quickly. 90% of all the coal used in this country is used by electricity companies to generate electricity.
Yes, thank you.
So we're burning coal.
Okay, next.
Are you an oil company stockholder?
Please, please let everyone here have opinion, and we are here to listen, and we appreciate all the talks, but please keep that three minutes that we use for, you know, our presentations so, so everyone have opportunity to talk. I really appreciate that. Thank you. It's all right.
Yeah. My name is Bill Brechtel. I live at 899D, and I pretty much disagreed with everything that man just said. But anyway, I did agree with the gentleman up here who suggested a cutting back on the program from three stations to just maybe focusing on Clubhouse 3. The rationale being, all the, almost all the units around Clubhouse 3 have carports, which don't give them access to the garage and the access. I have a Tesla, and I have a carport, and most of the time I get by okay, but when I need to get an extra charge, I have to drive down to Mission Viejo, there's a supercharger there, or up to Irvine, where there's a supercharger. So if we had a high, a high, a high-speed charger in the village, that would be a great thing for me. As far as investments, I am 75 years old. I am not planning to kick off anytime soon, and I would like to see continued investments in the village. So if we have to make some investment, as long as it's well thought out and a good investment, I am in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Majid, 2052A. The gentleman mentioned that you were going to make a study of all the charging stations in the area. I'd like to know if that's been done, or if you're going to do that.
No, one of my goals is to ask VMS to look at the surrounding areas and publish in the breeze, or, you know, make a publication of that, that where are these stations available? Because if somebody's going from gate one to gate five to get charged, they can probably, might be easier somewhere closer to the gate one outside that they can charge their car. So we try to get those locations, but would you please, you know, we, we will look at those and make a public that what is available around the village about the charging stations.
We can look into that.
Thank you.
I think that should be part of your study before it goes forward. Also, I'd like to ask you to go to SCE and ask about their next five-to-10-year plan and what they're going to do that may impact what we may do. In other words, their new facilities may provide some relief to our planning.
Sure.
The other thing, it's a 10-year plan to pay back. And as we know, technology changes overnight. I'd like you to consider that fact, that we may be buying something that may be obsolete in a few years.
Sure.
Also, I'd like you to consider that we do have a lack of parking here, so in your recommendations, please be aware that we need all we can keep.
Sure. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I work for GRF, but we did receive one email from a shareholder, or a resident, sorry. It states, Dear Maintenance and Construction Committee, our names are Paul and Penny Kratzser. We'd like to offer a thought or two on the subject of electronical charging stations. EV charging stations could be treated like gas stations. Gas stations were built and funded by the companies who made a business decision, took a business risk, and hoped to attract enough customers to turn a profit. If I didn't own a car, I wouldn't do a business as a gas station. EV charging stations could be handled the same way. We might allow a charging station company to install charging stations at its own expense in the village, possibly leasing a piece of land from GRF. The company would assess the market and determine the viability of the project. People who own EV stations could do this business there, and those who wouldn't, wouldn't. Seems to us that thinking of charging stations as a business would be a viable, profitable, and a fair way to handle them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this subject, which I think is very important and forward-thinking.
Would you please state your name?
Pardon?
State your name.
Oh, Lynn Finkalor, 3408 Caya Azul.
Okay, thank you.
I have an electric car and I have a garage, but I am concerned about everyone who does not, because I think EV revolution is coming down the road, and we have to be part of the future. My brother, who's an engineer, said to me, Lynn, every time you buy a computer, the minute you buy it, it's out of date. Okay? And I laughed, but we all understand that. But would any of us consider not buying a computer at all? No. You know they're going to get better, and the next time you buy, incrementally, you'll get a better one. That's why I agree that we should at least get one of the programs. And Clubhouse 3 sounds good, because it's available to people who need it the most. And then we can see how well it's used and how effective it is. And then maybe two years from now, there'll be new technology, and we can buy that for Clubhouse 5 or Clubhouse 4. But at least do something. You don't want to be without a computer. And that's the analogy.
Thank you.
I hope you'll go with.
Mike Row again. I really applaud the previous speaker who said, hey, there's going to, this, this revolution is coming. There's going to be some winners out there, but the idea of subsidizing guys for 10 years without knowing which one will be a good one doesn't seem like a good idea. So yes, we better get into this business, but can you find somebody that's willing to step forward and say, look, we're good. We're willing to put a station there, and we'll let the users subsidize it. You understand what I mean? Instead of, instead of a big investment from the whole community, put something in there that the EV owners want to use, will use, and is well-supported, and they've put themselves on the line to make sure that it keeps running right now. My, my information is that they're not doing that, that the suppliers of these companies are getting government funds, but then are not, then are not maintaining. So there's no responsibility, no liability.
Thank you.
Ralph Majid, 2052A. I forgot to mention one other point. I understand GF, GRF recently passed some fee increases for some facilities. The one that comes to mind is the golf courses. They made analysis, I believe, that they should be subsidized by something like 33%? I'm sorry, 67%? I might be off a few percentage. And that GRF would fund them with 33%. I think that same consideration should be done for this.
Yeah. That, that would increase our assessment, and I don't think people are going to take that very lightly. I appreciate that. I understand. Yeah. Yeah. Because we are asking people to subsidize for other usage. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Robert Henry, 870D. I am in favor. I've had a EV since 2018. It's a Bolt. It gets 290 miles, and you can drive up in LA and, or San Diego in, with plenty of time. Problem is, is there's no charging stations to speak of in this area. I've already, we've already researched it. So you have to go quite a ways to find charging, and they're usually being booked during the day because of businesses. The other thing is, is we really shouldn't be buying systems as they are now, because, like everybody has already said, things get modified and get better. And if we're stuck back in a 2022 era, and then two years later, something better comes along, it's faster, cheaper, does better, we're stuck. It should be done by the vendor to install it within the village. And I kind of agree with everybody saying, I live near Clubhouse 3, and it would be a great service to me, but five and four, probably not so, like they have garages. And the other thing I would like to say is, is it is expensive for going forward, but people who don't use AVs right now, they have to consider, do they want to shorten the number of people that bid on their houses when they move because those people won't come in because they can't charge their cars?
Thank you. I think this is probably the last comment. I appreciate that, because he.
You're saving the last, the best for last.
Exactly. Go ahead.
My name is Kathy Bausch, and I'm at 3361 Unit A. And I just have a quick question. I think I'm probably missing something here, but it seems to me, there are, I agree, there aren't very many charging stations behind the administrative building. I, for one reason or another, I'm at the administration building a lot. I have only seen one or two cars ever plugged in there. So like for the gentleman who says he has no place to plug his car, I know a place he could plug in his car. So I don't understand. It seems to me we should do as, someone should look at, and even though they are available for the public, even, you know, we ought to see how often that's utilized before we look at putting more in our community. I don't know. Maybe I'm missing something, but that's what I think.
Thank you. I guess now we close the comment portion of this. I just have one thing to mention before I go to the directors for their comment about all of these items. There is a bill, it's 1738, about EV charging a station that's signed in 9/28/22 and will be effective 1/1/2033. This bill requirement is regarding new constructions or a major remodeling of any facilities, that now you have to consider some of the EV charging and all of that. That's all we have to go by law. If we build another building, we definitely have to consider that. If we do a major remodeling, GRF need to do that. I don't want to speak for the mutual, but I know mutuals also thinking about program that they can put in place that members can alter their carports in order to be able to charge their car. That's the most convenient way for the people. If somebody buy in this community, they look at the carport, not the charging station at Clubhouse 5. I'm not against it or for it at this time, I'm just telling you what, you know, what the issues are. But there are new. But there are new bills also coming up from the state. We don't have to put the cart in front of the horse. We wait to see what the bills are, what the requirements are, what we have to do. So we don't have unlimited amount of money. We have limited amount of money, and we have to invest it wisely. We cannot have a 10-year program if it's not used, and we are stuck with the cost of it. The same people that are for it or against it at this time, they're going to be, you know, probably going to take your head. Even with the, you know, information that I provided at the beginning, the charging station behind the admin building, since 2019, had return of $1,100 a year. So go figure. How much cost is to put something in, and how long it takes for you to recoup it? And that's one of the example that we have, although it's open to the public. If it wasn't open to the public, I'd probably say it would be less, maybe $800 a year. But those are, those are some information for your task, for your information, to give you to understand what's going on. I'm not saying yes or no on anything. I'm just saying these are the fact that I'm sharing with you. With that, I'm going to open it up to the comments from the member of our committee and see if they have any input or any comments regarding all of these questions. Let's start from the other end. Lenny, do you have any?
Yeah, I have a few questions. One is, I, I understand, I appreciate all the member comments, and it does seem to make a lot of sense to, to use Clubhouse 3 as the starting point, because that's where all of our carports are. And maybe Clubhouse 4, because there's a lot of carports in there. But my concern with Clubhouse 4 is that it might not have the available parking once we put in the charging stations. So I, my, my first feeling would be, if we want to start this out on a, to see how it works, and because of the change in technology so fast, maybe we start it with Clubhouse 3 as a start and see how that works and see how it pays back. The second thing is that the spreadsheet showing 150,000 per location, I, I would like to see a little bit of detail on how that's broken down. I think that was a good idea as well. And finally, the incentive was mentioned, that it was, it was brought up on the chart, but I was, I was going to ask the question, how much is the incentive? And when would we know if we qualify for that incentive?
Is that all then?
And the last thing is the timeline to complete. When, when would this be able to be completed if we did approve it?
Okay. Let's, let's start with the Clubhouse 3. I, I heard a lot of people say, limit the program. To my knowledge, SCE is a profit company, for-profit company. They're going to do things that they can profit off of, not what help us. Let's be clear on that. To my knowledge, the SCE proposal is the best and final, take it or leave it. They are not negotiating for lesser number of stations, because it's not their, you know, their interest. We are peanut compared what they do. Either you do it, or you don't do it. It doesn't make any difference for them. We have to make a decision, what is our best interest here, not what SCE. What SCE, to my knowledge, is take it or leave it. Is that correct?
As per our last conversation with SCE, the total number of ports for those that they recommend moving forward is the minimum of reports that will, that they will consider.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I know. So it's, it's just, we have to make a decision on, well, that's what they said. I don't care, Carl, what you say, because that's what they say. They are the one that they're going to put it in, not us. They're saying that they're not going to put less, because it's not profitable for them. Yes. Yeah, they not three location. Okay. Is that correct, Bart? Well, let's, let's see.
So if the question is, can this committee recommend moving forward with one of those three and cancel the other two? Yes, you have that option.
So 10 location, 10, 10, 10 charging a station in one location?
Correct.
So not five? Just remember that. It's not five, because some people mentioned that reduce the number and, okay, well, that's good to know that, that, but, you know, it's not going to be less than 10. It has to be five. It has to be one location. Still, your cost is there. Is the cost going to change, or does it matter?
We, the estimate that we presented to you is the, based on the best information that we have today. Once we go to construction, we will go out to bid and get the actual prices.
For one location, so we don't know.
If, if the recommendation is to move forward with one facility, which, let's say is Clubhouse 3, we will set up a project, and we're going to bid that one project for the purchase of the equipment, its installation, and the 10-year maintenance and operation.
Okay. So we will go to that step. There is no way back. We have to move forward. You have comment?
Avon, you mean?
Clubhouse 1. And let me tell you, I advocated for that facility. I think that is a great location. From what I've seen about the use of parking, that is an ideal location for charging stations. However, Clubhouse 1 is under parked by close to 100 spaces. So Edison did look at that. It is close to a transformer, and if it was not for the issue of parking, they would have considered that. However, part of their due diligence is to reach out to the city and to find out if there are any parking restrictions. And when they did reach out to the city, their records show that that facility is under parked. And as per the current regulations, parking spaces for charging stations would mean a loss of parking. Until that changes, then that, that criteria still stands, then that is, you cannot lose 10 parking spaces at Clubhouse 1. As you develop that facility, if you develop it, you will have to find parking for that new facility, either within the site or elsewhere that will meet the requirements.
Thank you. As far as the incentive, I guess there are programs out there that probably state have, but they pay very little, maybe 10, 15% they give you, but they impose maybe other restriction on you. They're not going to pay. There is no program that we know out there right now that pays 80% or 90% of the cost right now.
So the incentive under the current Charge Ready 2 program, and for the one option that we apply for, the incentive is for Edison to build the infrastructure up to the charging station. And as I was mentioning by one of the speakers-
Okay, that's what you incentive means, okay.
It, it is very expensive to install the infrastructure.
Okay. And I think the timeline, we don't know, if we move forward, we know about timeline. Right now, I don't think, can you talk about timeline at this stage?
The chart that I represented earlier today shows the target timeline. And for the first step, which is to get us to the procurement of the equipment, we will have 45 days from the time that we sign agreements to, actually, from the time that we approve the concepts, to the time that we have POs issued to the selected contractor. So that timeline is very tight.
Okay. Next from the-
Hi. I'd like to know why both of our advisors are not sitting at the table. And, and I guess we could treat, Carl is an advisor, just like Ajit, and so I'd like Carl treated as if he were sitting at the table.
Are you seeing anybody any different? I think there wasn't enough chair, I guess, here. That's why he's sitting there. It's not a treatment. We are not treating anybody different. Jim?
I was very disappointed in the staff report. I have never read one so incomplete, in that it, it recommends something without any explanation of what's wrong. But why are they recommending that? They should have walked through whatever the numbers were or the reasons were that these three locations should not be considered. And also, they didn't even talk about the possibility of only having one location rather than all three. And I think it's clear now, we could have easily been talking about one location. And I agree with everything Carl said about really, Clubhouse 3 is the only reasonable location. Also, with regard to the price, I would just want to do a quick raise of hands. How many people here use the driving range? Raise your hand if you use a driving range. Great. Are, are you aware that we're budgeting a half a million dollars to repair the driving range? And less than 9% of the community uses a driving range? I'm glad to see some do. I, I also, as others have mentioned, I'd like the detailed estimate. I'd like to know which portions of the cost of the 150,000, how many, how much was operating? How much was each of the components? Because my understanding is that operating costs, all of it, including electricity, will be charged to the user. That's all I have for now.
Do you have any comment on that?
So yes, to restate one of the previous comments and Carl's comment regarding recommending one clubhouse, and as a state, as I stated before, you may recommend moving forward with one of the three, or two, or three, or none, none at all. So it, it, you get, you get to pick and choose from those three that are recommended for approval.
That was not clear in the staff report. That's a good information.
Thank you. Also, there was another question that was asked about the type of charger that is being proposed. At this time, it's only Level 2 chargers that this program supports. Level 2 chargers, if you're familiar with them, they charge a slower rate than the fast charger, but you still get quite a bit of energy to keep your car going. And if you're going to, like a show that's a couple of hours, you should get a good, depending on your vehicle, 20, 30 miles of range added to that.
Excuse me, we, we are in the different, you know, you guys have made your comment, now I have to listen to a committee member. Please give them the opportunity to ask their question. Thank you.
Was Bart finished?
Yeah.
Okay. One of the things you have to look at here in this legislation, we are, besides on remodels, major remodels, new construction, we're required to accommodate EV charging. Accommodate doesn't mean GRF pays for it or the mutuals pay for it, but we need to be open to let people get EV chargers. Again, it's hard to separate GRF from mutuals when you talk about EV chargers, because you have to have a mentality with charging EV vehicles. If you look at it more as you go to a fast charger somewhere, and you fill it all, fill your tank all the way full, and then you come back to the village, and you just do maintenance charges. And so you have to look at things quite a bit differently. In carports, one of the possibilities is solar panels on the roof, but you only get about 3 kilowatts per day, which would be a top off. You know, and third, we're looking at possibly doing something like that, possibly letting the members do their own little co-ops, and if they can bring in some outside entity to install chargers, we give them the land in order to do that. And so again, accommodation. But, and with that, you know, you're talking about 1,500 EV vehicles, only 90 are paying at the carports. So that means most of them are the ones with their own garages. I just had a gentleman the other day, came in, applied, wanted to get an EV charger for his garage. It only took him three weeks to get the whole approval. So we're, we're pushing to try and make it easier, but it's obviously easier for people with their own garages, because they already have the power. As far as the carports and the multi-story buildings with their carports underneath, it, it's much more difficult. And it's much more difficult even for the members if they want to pay. It's not a matter of just putting in another 220 circuit. You got to have the power to the panel in order to be able to spread it out, and you've got to be able to charge appropriately by having meters in. So it's, it's a lot more complex than just saying, we need more. And if we put these chargers in at one clubhouse, the one lady mentioned the fact that, what am I going to do, take my bicycle and ride it home? Well, yeah, that's kind of what you're going to have to do. And so if you're charging at the clubhouses, unless you have meetings there all day long where you're charging, you're going to have to come to that clubhouse, charge, figure out how you're going to get back to fill your tank up again, and how you're going to get home while you're waiting for your tank to get filled. So it's a lot more complex. And the reason I believe staff has made this recommendation not to approve is because I don't think we're going to get our initial investment back, because technology is going to change. We're going to do different things, like one of the gentlemen brought up the thing that showed solar panels and a battery backup system to charge your vehicle. I think that's what's going to happen, and if we have this 10-year commitment, all we're going to be doing is throwing money away. It's one thing to go out and buy the new computer that's the best you can get. It's another thing to go up, out and buy a two-year-old model of computer, and it's already obsolete before you put it on your desk. So that's what we're dealing with here. It's a lot more complex. And so whether we do a test case, you can do a test case and do one building and say, we're going to put in 10 chargers. And Edison's kind of holding the gun to our head. We have asked them for less chargers. They don't want to commit unless we put 10 in. And 10 takes 11 parking spaces, because you have to have two handicap. It also can only set in certain locations, because you can only have a 2% grade from the handicap parking spaces. So all that has to be looked at, and I think this is a bad investment to do this at this time. That's just my comments.
Thank you, Jim. I think before I get to Ajit, Ralph is in the committee, I know. Do you have any comments, Ralph? No, go ahead. Oh, come on, come on, Ralph. You have to vote.
Now you have to sit down. First, I apologize for being late. I had another problem to take care of. But I think Jim pretty well summed the whole thing up. He did pretty well covered it, I think. We, we do have people here who are living on fixed or almost no income, and we have people here who are still working and making a lot of money and want to drive to LA in their Tesla. So it, we, there's a big problem here. We got a lot of different kinds of people. Jim, I think you've covered it well. It's just not something that's going to happen very easy and very overnight. One of the problems, for example, you got to run, if you're going to go to a fast charger, you got to have a heavier copper conductor, just a heavier wire going to your car, simply because if you run too much through a wire, it's going to burn it up. It'll just melt the copper. So that's one of the problems we have to face in this thing. There's a lot of stuff to it. It's, it's a big bag of worms.
Thank you, Ralph. Ajit? You're good?
Well, I have a few comments. First of all, I appreciate the member initiatives and comments, but I understand you have said that previous, my spear, previous speakers have talked about the complexity of the problem. And my feeling is that the EV industry is currently in the process of evolution. More and more technologies will be coming in, new things will be coming up. So we might find that we spend a lot of money to accept what is available now, and then, then there will be better options. So I don't want that we get stuck with some initial technology for 10 years and who are actually benefiting from it. I think the way I see, there is very little- I think the way I see, there is very little of return on investment. SCE is making the money. They're selling, and definitely, we should help our residents make it easier for them to have some kind of amenity that is so valuable to them. But I say, my feeling is that we should caution ourselves not to rush, and see what developments are coming up. I'm confident that for the green revolution, I see there are a lot of incentives from the state and federal government. We should evaluate what we can get from that, and then we will take our decisions which way to go. So I will caution that we don't jump on something and rush. That is my comment.
Thank you, Jim. Carl?
I've heard everybody, and I agree with many of the things that have said here. The issue right now is the fact that these chargers that they'll install right now are Level 2 chargers. That means they need 220 volts, okay? And they need 220 volts. If you go to a Level 3 charger, I think that they're going to 480, but basically, they're DC, okay? And as a result of that, most people today can hook up to a Level 2 charger and charge the top off within an hour, an hour and a half, two hours, okay? You can get that top off that you need. The issue right now is the fact that if we do nothing in United, then they have no options at all, because at each of the carports, they have to talk to their neighbor. As I said, three carports, or maybe five carports, carry 20 amps for five carports, which means that they have to plug in one at a time, because they draw 12 amps. So 12 plus, you can't have two, because that would be 24 amps, so therefore, you'll basically blow, you'll pop the breaker. So under the circumstances right now, SCE will provide us with the infrastructure, they'll run the lines to that location, they'll run 220-volt lines. If we need 480-volt lines, maybe we can negotiate with them for a Level 3 in the future. But right now, the Level 2 charger is just the charger itself. The infrastructure that gets the electricity to it is what we're talking about right now. Because charge point will come in and put a Level 2 charger where there's 220 volts. But if there was something higher there, they could either use a small transformer at that place and use a Level 2 charger, or go with a Level 3 charger, because that location is now ours, for the most part, to do with what we want, as long as we had electricity to it. Right now, we have no electricity to it. So therefore, thinking about the future, you have the electricity going to it, and you decide what you want to do with it later on. But right now, Level 3, Level 2, or Level 1 chargers, it's only a matter of what voltage you bring to that location and how many amps you bring to it. And that's the issue. So to just say that we just have, "We're going to be doing something today that'll never, in two weeks' time period, we're going to have something different," no, it's going to have to be some form of electricity, and that is where we will be going with that electricity to those locations. And then you do what you want after that.
Thank you, Carl.
I have a comment. One thing is that, ultimately, when we go to get gas, we just take it and be done with it. So it will come to the point that we need to charge these cars as soon as possible, maybe an hour, hour and a half. That will be the name of the game in the future. So overnight charges, to install a lot of, invest a lot of money, overnight charges is not a very good proposition at all. Thank you.
So one of the things that hasn't come up is just how much the charging stations behind the community center are being used or not being used. SCE wants 10, because they think if they put in 10, a lot of people will come. But SCE is wrong. If, you know, there are seven behind the community center, and they're not being used that much. We need better statistics on what's going on. Personally, there's a lot of good things came out today, I want to say that. But I am in favor of growing a plan that is 100% user-paid for, and I'll suggest we grow it at a rate as the demand for the develops, okay? I do recognize that there's a problem in United, and maybe we have to make a special consideration of maybe starting in that area. But I think it should be paid for by us. I live in a building that has an elevator and a recreation room, and every month, I pay for that elevator and for that recreation room, and nobody in United helps me, okay? So that's the way it ought to be. And outside chargers, chargers outside this area will proliferate. If you go down to Target on Alicia, they have several, they have like six fast chargers. The bank down here, that I go to, Union Bank, just put a, there's a fast charger put in that parking lot. So they are proliferating everywhere, and I do think that within 10 years, a lot better stuff will be available. But I suggest that we be responsible, and if demand grows in the village, we supply a way to take care of it, as long as the users pay for it.
I feel like Rudolph. Okay. So I was looking at the numbers that were given to us at the beginning. It's about 10% of the vehicles in the village are either plug-in or plug-in hybrid. So I do have questions that I am going to present here. When I, I'm an engineer, I'm a very detail-oriented, I read through things, and I saw the presentation, and a few things caught my attention, that I think that this report, I agree with some of the members here, that there's not enough detail in it to make any sort of decision, in that there was an item that was called Associated Program Fees. It was just a word, a statement. What are they? And the, I don't want us to get blindsided. I remember, I've been here 11 years, that we put in solar panels, and we were going to get money back. We can't find how to report that money back. We don't, we were told we would have maintenance on those solar panels, and someone else in the audience brought up, "How do we know that these companies that we're going with are going to stand behind it? Do they ever," I mean, that's the research we need to do when we make the decisions on who we go with, for what equipment, and that what do they stand behind, that we need to make sure that we don't get stuck holding the bag or we're blindsided. It was stated, $20,000 over 10 years. Is that a sliding scale? Is it an efficiency scale? Is it a usage scale? I don't know. I've looked into, when this first was brought up, I looked into the new mall being built. The production, projection is that within five years, that'll be up and running, it could be shorter as it comes along. And I looked at their site plans, there's EV stations in there. I contacted them, but did not get a reply back yet about how many EV stations. I can walk to that mall out of my gate, so talk about, "Go charge," what do you do for an hour and a half? You can go walk the mall, you can. So these things are coming up, that in the next five years, just like was said earlier, there will be more stations brought in outside of the village. So we need to consider that also. Do we take on the burden of supplying what we think we need for a large amount, but yet we will have outside of the village development with more EV stations? Clubhouse 3, I don't live near it, I live near Gate 2, but if you look around Clubhouse 3, you see signs everywhere on the street, "No Clubhouse 3 event parking." So if we take, it's kind of a conundrum, because we need the spaces at Clubhouse 3 for events, but at the same time, if we take 11 spaces for the charging, we've now reduced the number of spaces for events, but we're in United where we charge in our carports. So that's a kind of a touchy, we need to be very conscientious about how we do that and what we're trying to achieve there, both satisfying events and satisfying the people that need the charging. I have, again, like I said, concerns about the maintenance and the solar panel. I would like to have a breakout of at least the estimate of the equipment cost, because we're also going to be responsible for the installation cost. SCE is doing the groundwork. They're going, and they're going to break into the asphalt, they're going to do all of that, they're going to do the hookup to the transformer, but we're going to do and pay for the hookup to the equipment. So we need to know what is that estimate cost. When you give a blanket number, I don't feel comfortable with that. It may be the total, it may be correct, but I would like to see the breakout of that number. In item 12 that showed up on there, I don't know if any of you noticed, but item 12 said that there's an incentive request. What if we're denied that incentive request? What are the repercussions there? Right? There's also step F, there's a compliance verification. What if we don't meet the standards? What happens? We've passed the point of saying we're not going to do it, and then we're responsible for the costs of what SCE did. So we need those answered. Again, I'm very detailed, so maybe driving you crazy, but that's what I do. What if we're out of compliance? We have to make sure that we are covered for the steps that follow all the way to turning on the switch. And if we don't meet some of those steps, are we responsible for the costs that SCE has incurred? We need to find out. I quickly asked, the cost to the users, from a quick answer, there's no ROI. They're not being charged for also the cost of the equipment and installation, it's just the electricity they use. And that cost, the charging fees go through a third party, and I would like the breakdown of all of that. And is there a way that we can also tag on and override to that cost if we want to get some of that back? Now, if it's $150,000, we cannot, you know, charge $15 an hour, or $15 a kilowatt, or whatever, it's got to be reasonable, but from my understanding, there's no pass-through of the cost of the equipment and the installation. It is something that we're going to provide, but not get paid back by the users. The equipment that we're going to look at, if we look at one station, one group of 11, no, 10 with 11 spaces, I want us to make sure that we can look at equipment that could be upgraded, that when you buy a computer brand-new, and usually, you would hope that over a period of time, you can upgrade it, but when you get to a certain amount of time, you can't upgrade it anymore. You're past the technology. So I want to make sure that the equipment that we purchase has a way of getting upgraded and is looked into by the company that we select, that's providing it, that says, "Yes, we have space here for upgrades. Yes, we've looked into the future, we know what's coming, because they know what research is going on, and this equipment can be upgraded, that we have, we truly have a 10-year life on it or such, that because of what's coming along, we can upgrade it to the 10-years technology of USB." Whoever thought, you know, you had the old computers, now you have the USB port. So as computers upgraded, you had that port, you could add on things. I want to make sure the equipment we purchase can be upgraded. And back to the Clubhouse 1 parking, I pass there all the time, and one of my questions out there is, UPS has got two pods sitting there? I want to know if we're getting rent for it, that's a side note. But nothing says that we can't go to the town and try to get a variance for adding on, and I know what they're saying, but I don't know if we're going to ever add on to Clubhouse 1, we may do renovations, but if we don't add on to it, that would be our restriction, from what I just heard, that if we add on to Clubhouse 1, you have to add on, you know, you need the spaces. But if we can get a variance to put in, it doesn't eliminate spaces, it just is going to be for charging. So if we could go to the town and find out if, can we get a variance, so that we could put our charging station there? That might be a greater, a better alternative than Clubhouse 3, where again, we have parking restrictions. And so my last comment is, let's not rush into it without getting a lot of these answers, get more information, so we have a more, we can make a more educated decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like our advisor to respond to some of the comments that were just made. I noted a few of the comments that were incorrect. Carl, would you mind?
Excuse me, I don't think, we are past that stage. This is just a comment by the committee. We have done a lot of the discussion back and forth. Let's remember, fact, 10% of the cars in the community are using charging. Only 90 of them have decal and permit to charge. Only 90 cars have the permit. The rest of them are either charging somewhere else, or charging illegally, or charging in their garage. Let's have that in mind. That's what's happening in this community. Another fact, charging a station behind admin building. Five charging stations, Level 1, 2, over the last four years, the return was only $1,100 a year. Okay. That's 1,100 a year. It's 50. No, it is to public, it's expensive, there is no data to show how many members use it, how many public use it.
That's not true.
That is absolutely true, man.
No, the ChargePoint report shows it.
Hold on, hold on. This is, this, I'm telling you number, I'm giving you the numbers, and those are fact. You don't know, so please stay quiet. I appreciate, I would appreciate that, because you already had time to talk. Those are the numbers that was provided to me by the VMS and I trust or staff. That's the fact.
The monthly ChargePoint report shows exactly how many residents versus non-residents.
And remember, those 90 people that pay, they don't pay GRF, they pay mutuals. We don't collect money, the mutual collects money for the charging, for those decals that they get paid. If they're using the electricity, they're choosing electricity of the mutuals. The bottom line is, we have a proposal from SCE, and you heard it in front of us. This committee have to make a motion to accept or reject the proposal, and then give that to the, this committee doesn't have any jurisdiction of saying that this is final, this is not final. We only make recommendation to GRF board as to proceed or not to proceed with the SCE proposal. For that, I'm asking, anybody want to make a motion to accept or reject this proposal? Nobody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to cancel all the remaining applications under this program.
Do I have a second? Okay. One more time, is there any other discussion on the issue from the committee?
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second at this time. Thank you. Okay. Now that there is no other discussion, I would ask for the vote. The vote, the motion is to reject this proposal and cancel all application. The one that supports that, would you please raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five, six. We have the majority, and the proposal have been rejected, and all application, we recommend to the GRF to cancel. to the GRF to cancel the applications. But again, this is not final. If you have more input, you can come to the GRF meeting when it's discussed, and you can say your prayer. But that's a recommendation that from this committee going to go to the GRF. I thank everyone for their input, for your patience, and thank you very much. Have a great day. This meeting is adjourned.